Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the East Brandywine Township Board of Supervisors Special Session for Friday, December 20th, 2019, 8:00 a.m. Just reminding, a reminder that a gen, um, a recording device will be used during this meeting. And now I'm going to open it up for public comment for non-agenda items. And again, rules for conduct of public meeting established by Resolution 2008. The time allotted to each individual making a comment shall be three minutes unless otherwise set by the presiding officer. Additional public comment may be granted by the decision of the presiding officer at the conclusion of the meeting. So I'll open it up for public comment on non-agenda items. And if you do want to make a comment, please just come up, state your name and address at the podium, and we'll start with that.
Good morning. Good morning. Dennis Whitley, 1199 Horseshoe Pike. I have followed, been following this procedure with the township and Carlino's, uh, since the inception of it. As a local businessman, I just need to commit the time that it's taken for me to come up here and talk about this just for a few minutes.
But this is, this is for, uh, right now, we're doing non-agenda items. So if this is part of the agenda, you could do that at the end. That's fine. But I just-
Okay. So then for non-agenda items, uh, just to give some inception here as to, uh, concerns for the township's looks, the township has spent millions upon millions of dollars to try to upgrade, uh, the parks, the trail systems, open space. And as a business owner in this township, I think it's pathetic that at this day and age, we don't have any Christmas ornaments or lighting in this town whatsoever. You drive through this town, it looks like it's pathetically poor and can't afford even have any lights. There's no Christmas lights on the building, there's nothing up in town, and there's no, there's no growth interest in doing the town. I mean, in, in the last 50 years, there's been absolutely no change in this town to try to upgrade its looks. And millions and millions and millions of dollars have been spent elsewhere. So just for some time, and I don't know which organization, which committee should be involved with this, but there needs to be some, some knowledge that this town exists and not just a thoroughfare for people to drive in and out. So just trying to help the local businesses become something someday, maybe some interest in making the town look like a town instead of putting a Christmas tree on some back road in the middle of a park that's next to a pavilion in the middle of nowhere. That really doesn't give anything to the people that drive through this town. I just recently went to the mountains deer hunting and bear hunting, and some of these towns where they're so poor, these coal towns, they, they have, you know, everybody's on drugs and meth and, and, and welfare, and even these towns still have, you know, Christmas lights up. Okay? So just trying to bring some interest that the town maybe can do something to help promote its businesses because they're starving to death. And a lot of businesses that come in town go out of business. And it's because it doesn't have a business feel. So just trying to give you guys some, some knowledge from an outsider looking in, please try to have some interest in its town and make it look like something that it can really be. All right? Thank you.
Anybody else for non-agenda items? Okay. Seeing none, I will put on the record, um, I have, um, we're supervisor short again. But I wanted to, uh, clarify, I have set up, I had given, uh, and he may be here, but I just wanted it on record while we're going to continue. Um, um, I had given Supervisor Winters, um, several dates last week for this meeting. He said none of them could work. And then, uh, nothing could work for him until this morning. So this is why we're here this morning. So unfortunately, um, I haven't cut him out of the equation, but we have, um, made this meeting special because of his time restraint. So I just wanted to put that on record. All right. So we're going to go ahead and turn it over to, um, our solicitor, Tom Osti, for the Carlino developer agreements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Uh, the minutes of the previous meeting-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry about that.
We're not going to do yes, last night's or anything. Uh, we wouldn't have them. So, okay. Yep. Sorry. Go ahead, Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I think this is the fourth time this has been on your agenda, and I think the board members are familiar with, uh, what the request is. There are several agreements, uh, which are associated with the Carlino East Brandywine Land Development, which were required by your approval and the Township subdivision and land development ordinance as well as other, the stormwater management ordinance and other ordinances. So I think you've all had a chance to review these. I answered, or our office answered questions we got from one or more supervisors about the agreements. So they're ready for your consideration and a decision on the agreements. I, I see Mr. Kaplan is here representing the applicant. I don't know whether he wanted to add something else, uh, or say, say something about the agreements.
Yeah. Just something very briefly. Uh, two days ago, you and Kristen called me. We looked at Mr. Bruman's letter. Mr. Bruman's letter said that there's nothing in the agreement of what happens if we go ahead and if we start construction, and somehow the approval is overturned. So we agreed on a new paragraph 15 that's an acknowledgement that, um, the permits or the approvals are subject to appeal if we go ahead and if we construct. And if it's overturned, Township will withdraw the permits and approvals, and we will put the, um, we'll, we'll return the ground to the condition prior. So we had oral argument yesterday. Um, we all know that we can't guess on how long it'll take. We have no control over that. We're certainly not starting any construction in the next couple of months. So it's, uh, it, it was fine with us. Other than that, everything's, everything's the same.
Thank you.
And, and again, that new paragraph is a paragraph 15 of the development agreement that, uh, was circulated to the board, and they have seen that paragraph. But just for the record, so it's clear, there are nine documents that are for your consideration. One is a development agreement, two, the financial security agreement, three, the form of the letter of credit, four, a drainage improvements, operations and maintenance agreement, five, traffic signal easement, six, covenant to maintain porous paving, seven, pedestrian and bicycle easement, eight, deed fee simple from the Township to Pendot, nine, stormwater management facilities, operation and maintenance agreement. So I believe in order to start the discussion, it would be appropriate to, for someone, if they're inclined to, uh, consider approval of these documents, make a motion to approve the reference documents as I've just listed between the Township and Carlino East Brandywine LP, except for the deed fee simple, which is between East Brandywine Township and Pendot. All is presented and authorized the Chairman of the Board of Supervisors and other Township officials to execute and acknowledge the aforementioned documents and further authorizing the recording as required of the documents in the Office of the Recorder of Deeds in Chester County, Pennsylvania, when properly completed, executed, and funded as verified by the Township Solicitor.
So moved.
All in favor?
Second.
All in favor?
Well, you need to ask for discussion. Need to ask for discussion.
Okay. I'll, I'll call you then. Did you have anything you wanted to discuss?
Yeah.
Okay. No, that's what we were, that's what I was doing.
Okay. So I just got Kristen's comments that she wanted to add. Couple things yesterday I hadn't even looked at yet because I was driving, and then we were here last night, I believe. What did she add?
Well, I can read it if it's helpful, but Mr. Bruman was here at the last meeting representing, I believe, Eleanor Partnership, and I see him again in the audience. And one of the, and then he sent a follow-up letter to our office, and one of the issues he raised was a concern that, uh, there, the, the developer might proceed with construction during the pendency of appeals, and he was concerned that something might be constructed, and then, uh, how would it be removed? So we've added a paragraph 15 to the development agreement, which the developer has agreed to, basically saying that the developer understands that there are appeals pending, that if they, if Carlino commences construction, it does so at its own risk, and they're acknowledging that. And in, in the event there's a final adverse ruling, uh, the township would revoke any permits that were issued, and the developer would be required to remove any improvements that are constructed on its property or the township's property and restore those properties to the condition that existed prior to construction. So they've, we've, we drafted that paragraph, sent it to Mr. Kaplan, and Mr. Kaplan indicated earlier this morning that the developer will agree to that.
And what about the comments for the highway occupancy permit?
What comment is that?
Has the applicant received it?
No. The applicant cannot get the highway occupancy permit until, uh, Pendot receives the deed conveying the area of the right turn lane to Pendot. And that's one of the documents which they are requesting approval of. And I believe, Mr. Kaplan, correct me if I'm wrong, I am told that that is the only item that Pendot is waiting for in order to issue the permit.
That's our understanding, yes.
Thank you.
So... But they don't have it. I don't see how we can sign something that says they have it.
Well, there's, I think you've raised this issue several times, and I can't find anything in the documents that say the permit has been issued. And frankly, I've said before that the developer cannot commence construction of the connector road without the highway occupancy permit, and I don't think they intend to. And Mr. Kaplan and Mr. Miller can confirm that if they'd like to.
That, that's correct.
And it's my understanding that, uh, permits would not be issued until, building permits would not be issued until the HOP and all the other things are addressed.
The plan will not be recorded.
Won't be released to be recorded.
Correct.
And the building permits would not be issued until the HOP, as well as several other items, have been addressed.
Yeah, that's right. We have to, and we have to record the plan before you can get a building permit. To record the plan, we've got to do a list of, accomplish a list of items that are spelled out in the agreement, including getting, uh, a highway occupancy permit.
But part of the order was that this applicant shall obtain?
No, it wasn't.
Sure it was. It says right here, it's order, it's number...
Yeah. The, the board approval requires the applicant to get the highway occupancy permit. It doesn't say that the agreements which were before you this morning can't be approved or signed before the highway occupancy permit is issued.
And I believe what the resolution says, or-
Uh, pardon the interruption. If we're going to have an extended dialogue, could I have Mr. Kaplan approach the microphone? Thank you.
I believe the resolution talks in terms of what needs to be done to release the plan for recording. That's what the key issue is. The plan's got to be recorded before we can get a building permit. So the entire agreement is couched in, we've got to do X, Y, and Z before the plan will be released for, um, recording. On top of which, the law is very clear, there are a number of cases that say that municipalities can't hold up municipal approvals because of a Pendot or a DEP permit. But we're, we're not going to start construction without the D, without the Pendot permit. And so, uh, yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Winters, but you're, you're just not correct.
Well, we, um, yesterday evening, we denied a preliminary plan approval. Uh, we denied granting it because of-
That's actually wrong. We didn't deny anything.
Well, we, we didn't approve it because they didn't have-
We got an extension, is what we got.
We did not approve a preliminary plan last night due to the fact that they hadn't, they didn't even have all of their approvals. And that was a preliminary plan that the board, that you advised the board, not grant.
Would you like me to respond?
Um, so as far as-
I don't think that's an accurate statement.
I'm sorry, Jay, but what did, I'm not done, but what? Well, did, did, did NVR leave the township building yesterday evening with a preliminary approval? Yes or no?
No, they gave us an extension.
No, they extended the time for us to consider the plan for 45 days, I believe.
Why is that?
Because there are a number of items on the Panoni letter, as well as the Heinrich letter and the Baldes letter, which need to be addressed. And, um, they agreed to extend the time because they felt that they would be able to address those in a relatively short order. And I think there was some concern that, um, it was, uh, the plan had not advanced to the stage where preliminary plan approval was appropriate. I think it's very, and I will note that it's very typical in development plans of this nature, that, um, you, you have a number of, I'll call them punch list items that have to be addressed by the developer, and those are addressed between the time that these kinds of agreements are approved and the plans are released. And in some cases, I can recall it taking months, if not a year or more, before the developer had all of those punch list items completed. Uh, but it, it, this is just one step in the process.
So it wasn't, they did not receive approval last night because of some outstanding issues? I don't see how the board, how, how we're ready to sign nine agreements.
Well, we don't know if they were going to receive approval or not. We never voted on it because they chose to do this. So we can't, that's an inaccurate statement to continue to say they didn't get approval for this. They offered us an extension.
Kyle, they had, they were on the agenda for approval. They didn't receive approval.
Again, I don't think it's-
I think you're barking up the wrong tree, but go ahead. How, how am I barking up?
Because it's an accurate statement.
How, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, audience. How's that inaccurate? They were on the agenda to receive preliminary approval.
Okay.
They did not receive preliminary approval. That is not incorrect. That's a fact.
Okay.
So-
You're, you're always right.
I'm always, I'm not saying I'm always right, I'm saying that that-
Okay. So anything else? What's your next thing?
Yeah. As far as, as far as the, um, indemnification, it's a limited partnership. I think that we need to have some kind of additional security.
Well, we, I'm sorry. Were you finished?
Yeah.
On that issue?
Mm-hmm.
Would you like me to respond?
Yes.
I think we've, we discussed this issue at length at the last meeting. Um, there's no legal obliga, well, let me start by saying the developer has posted financial security for the just compensation that is due for the condemnations. I know it's your view that that is inadequate, an inadequate amount, but the developer in this case has done what it is and was required to do, and we don't have the authority to request any further security for that purpose. And if, I, I don't believe you want Mr. Kaplan to provide any information.
As far as why are we not authorized, that we can simply say, "We want additional security," or we're not going to execute these agreements.
You can say that, but I-
I mean, don't say, don't say that we don't have the authority.
You don't have the legal authority.
We're not here to appease an applicant, we're here to protect the interest of the township.
And I, I understand that, and that's-
$125,000, would you agree is a little bit inaccurate?
The, the amount was calculated based on the appraisals that, and were, that were available at the time that the agreement was agreed to by the parties. So that's how that amount was determined. Whether, I can't predict what will happen eventually in the condemnation proceeding.
And that was nine years ago, was the amount of just compensation?
Hey, that's not accurate.
Those are 2011.
Well, there are some more, there are some more recent appraisals which, uh, support the amount that was posted as financial security.
And I did read them, I did read them briefly, and it, it appears that the appraisers aren't even appraising the 10 acre lot, they're praising it 1.93 acres.
Well, I'm, I'm not, I don't, I'm not an expert in appraisals. I have reviewed quite a few of them over the years, and I won't sit here and take any representation about, um, the quality or validation of the appraisals.
If the appraiser, if the appraisals aren't appraising a full parcel, then it would be an incorrect amount.
Well, I, again, I understand your opinion.
Well, that's an incorrect statement, too.
If I, if I have 10 acres and I want to get appraised, and they appraise 2 acres?
They appraise what the taking is.
Can I finish? If, what taking is based on what? It's that appraiser appraised the land as a 2 acre separate parcel, not a 10 acre parcel.
You're wrong.
It says it right in the, in the first page of the summary.
They did a before and after, that's what took so much. Don't, wait, don't interrupt me, please. I didn't interrupt you. We had the appraisals done by the township's chosen appraiser and by our chosen appraiser. And they were done multiple times over the years, and the last one was just done, um, recently. And what was taken was the 1.92 acres, and the appraisals were done, we haven't seen anything that would contradict that. And, and we entered into an agreement with you, and we've lived up to the agreement, including paying all of your fees for all of the litigation that has been caused by your friends. So we've lived up to our part of it.
What do you understand?
Well, ye, yes you do.
No, I don't, actually.
Ye, yes you do. But then think about it. So we have lived up to all of our obligations under the agreement. We have not only posted security, we've paid the estimated just compensation. We paid, what did we pay, Peter? Seventy, eighty thousand dollars?
No, I think it was 105.
So we've paid it, and you still have the letter of credit as security.
So your applicant, so your client, nine years ago, offered $125,000 for that same 1.93 acres, and then nine years later, you paid him 70, 77,000.
We didn't-
No, Mark, Mark, two minutes.
Go ahead.
Jason, listen, listen, listen.
You really need to do a better job preparing, really. Okay? So the condemnat, there's an MOU that was established in, what, 2015?
Yeah, I think 2015-
2011, I believe.
But then it was updated.
Right.
The condemnation took place. The MOU contemplated two independent appraisals. The township got an appraisal, we got an appraisal. The two appraisals were then updated for the pieces that were taken. Got that so far?
I'm not, I'm not 10 years old, Mr. Miller. I, I guess I get that.
Okay, well, you, you, your comments suggest you don't understand the documents.
I'm, I'm reading off emails from you. I'm going by, you offered Saint Evans Bank $125,000.
Your comments suggest you don't understand the documents. Okay?
How, how do you figure it?
Because what you say repeatedly at meetings. So let me go back to the way the MOU works. We put up security in a form of a letter of credit that you've double-checked that it's in place, and it is, with a bank. There today. In addition, we just wrote two checks to the BVA and Eleanor people for the appraised values, using the higher of the two appraisals. They were very close, by the way. There is now a process called a board of you that will verify the, excuse me, the value of the land that, uh, you're, I do, I'll agree with Mark, your friends will contest the value. That's where that takes place. That's the legal process where the values get determined ultimately. And we are on the hook to pay whatever the ultimate value is, letter of credit notwithstanding. That's how it works. I don't, I don't know how much more I can explain to you.
You're not going to commit to it?
What do you, what, if the board of viewers have a final determination of over $125,000, are we just supposed to just take your word that you're going to pay us the additional money?
It's what the agreement says.
That's the agreement based on a limited partnership.
So what?
That's a piece of paper.
You know what? I'm not going to engage in this anymore. I think that-
I think you need to, because I'm asking you a question.
Well, I'm done, because both of us have answered it. This is a limited partnership that's paid millions of dollars of fees that were charged to the township. This is, this is, this is a, a partnership that's done everything that it was required to do. So you have no basis, you have no basis for contesting i- its credibility. But more importantly, it's what the documents say, and we've lived up to the documents, whether they were done nine years ago, which they weren't, or whether they were done four years ago, and the, and they contemplated that there would be an appraisal as of the day of taking, the value as of the day of taking. And the day of taking was a couple of years ago. So talking about what happened in 2011 is irrelevant.
Well, and you're, you're trying to buy me from agreement, and that some other board authorized in 2011. I would say that, I think that has a lot to, to do with this, especially when it says the board shall approve a plan similar to that of one who, that was approved in 2011.
You're in the-
It was not overturned.
I, I'm sorry. I, I misspoke. I, I think the, the MOU is dated 2014, but I don't have the document in front of me. It, it was not 2011.
The original one, though.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to withdraw from this debate with, uh, Mr. Winters. That's not going to get me anywhere.
But how's it, I want to know, I would like to see-
This particular question, but i- if, if you do have questions, happy to hear them. I, I just want to remind everybody, we're not going to rehash what we started last week. If there's new questions that we can certainly answer, um, you know, we'll, we'll address those. I did not see any, uh, any new questions, but do you have anything new pertaining to, to what we didn't discuss last week?
Yes. You had asked me what would make me feel comfortable, and I think that, uh, in order to protect the interest of the township, that we should have a, uh, increased amount of letter of credit, or, and with a personal guarantee, we're that letter of credit. And two years if the bank does not approve, uh, reissuing the letter of credit, if this is not done by now, then we have no way of, um, of collecting it. So I think that with the state RACP grant, they had to, one of the special clauses is the applicant will be signing their personal obligation, so I believe-
Wait a minute, Jason. You just, this is another example, you just don't know what you're talking about. You simply don't. The RACP is a grant to us. Okay? Wait, listen, listen carefully, really carefully.
Really carefully.
It's a grant from us, from the state of Pennsylvania. What the state of Pennsylvania wants is not a guarantee, they want to see your financial capacity to finish the project. That's not a guarantee. It's a very different thing. So you, you really got to do a better job.
Well, isn't there a special clause in the contract that has the host municipality shall also sign as an obligation, uh, for this RACP grant, as well as, as well as your partners? I'm going to pull it up right now, and I'll, I'll have to go print it, and we'll talk about that, because I brought that up, and no one, you know, you want to say that I don't know what I'm talking about, I'm just going to show it to you.
What's, what's the RACP grant got to do with these documents? We don't, we have a commitment for, we have a letter commitment for a RACP grant. We're not here doing documents about a RACP grant. We're here about doing the development agreements.
You have a million dollar grant for a road that you have estimated at 1.1 million from Al Myers in July of 2018, but now with the financial security agreement, it's up to 1.6 million.
What, what are you talking, what are you talking about? We have, we don't have a grant, we don't have a grant for a road. We have a grant for a project that includes the road, it includes the, the, all the other site work, it includes building, uh, buildings. It's, it's a piece of, uh, the, the entire project. That's not for the connector road.
Safety of not connecting North Covilleville 322.
That's not what the RACP is for.
Look at the letter of support that Mr. Fisher signed without any public comment or even knowing about it, states, "We are in support of this applicant receiving the RACP grant to help build a connector road to ensure a, uh, a safety issue at the intersection of North Covilleville and 322."
It's been that way since the day I walked in this township. That, that this connector road was desired by the township long before there was a, before there was a RACP grant. The same thing was said to Gambon 10, 12 years ago. The, the RACP, the, the RACP grant is to us for the entire project. I, 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 Mr. Chairman, this is just way, way off base. This is just intended to delay this.
It's not intended for anything, Mr. Kaplan. It's intended to make sure that the township's protected. As far as the developers agreement, it says, is, and part of the order of approval, it states that any amount of compensation that you, I'm sorry, any amount of, uh, money that you use to build the road shall be given to us to, to determine what credit for the traffic impact fee.
So-
So that's why it's relevant.
The paragraph, it's in, the, the developer's agreement has taken, incorporated that, that requirement. It's right in the document.
Yeah, the developer's agreement. To, to determine how, the amount of credit the township will issue based on the actual cost of construction. We're on the same page.
The paragraph says what the paragraph says, I'm not here to characterize it, Mr. Winters.
Article thirty of your RACP grant, special conditions.
Do you have anything else while you're looking that up that you want to bring up?
The fact that this is going to bind a future board, that it's not necessary. I'm not, there's nothing, I'm not saying that you're not entitled to a new project, I'm saying that it's just a little bit rushed at the last minute and.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, perhaps while Mr. Winters is searching for that, you could request if there's anyone else that would like to make public comment.
And I was also going to give the other parties an opportunity to speak first if they wanted to.
Now, I don't know whether, I see Mr. Brooman here, as I indicated earlier, I don't know whether he has something else to say, or Mr. Blair, but as I indicated earlier, we did address one of the comments from Mr. Brooman.
Hello, everybody, good morning. My name is Leonard Blair, I'm a equitable owner in both the Spence property, which is, you have under Eleanor, and BVA, which is the shopping center. I was here a couple of weeks ago, and we talked about financial security for the township. And I briefed you on the potential liability of the taking. I wanted to go back a little bit further and just reiterate on one thing that I keep on hearing all the time, and I'd like to correct, and it was about the other side's attorney, I believe it was Pam Tobin, his remark on how safety is needed now for the new road. Presently, the intersection has a light. Your police chief in deposition stated that there was only three non-PennDOT reportable, non-life-threatening accidents in nineteen years. Also, he stated that the new road needed twists and turns as it was too straight, and therefore would encourage speeders. You presently have such a throughway in our center. Also coupled to that, you have a new light now going in west to take more of that traffic. So I don't believe that safety's enhanced at all, it might be less safe than it was before. Getting on to where we are here, the last time I was here, I talked to you about damages from the taking. I saw some disbelief among the board. In the past readings of your appraisals, I see the least-cost approach used, using only for damages based on some very limited and wrongfully assumptions. One of which looks at damages on, say, two acres only, and not as it related to ten acres as a whole and its impact on zoning. To make it clear, a ten-acre gross lot, referring to the Spence property, has the right by zoning to four units per acre. That's on gross, okay? Our property is over ten acres on gross. The property on net is thirty-eight point, or is 9.73 acres, which nets thirty-eight units. And it is a by-right plan. Your taking has guaranteed a loss to us. Each unit is valued in grounded profit somewhere north of seventy-five thousand each. Today, I wanted to share with you just the view of that zoning as previously drawn. Please forgive the qualities of the drawings, since these are only eight-and-a-half by elevens and the originals reside with my attorney, Paul Prince. It is a very viable plan, and it meets your basic requirements. This is where the damages come from. And I'll pass them out to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blair.
Next one I'll do is I'm going to give you.
Excuse me, excuse me, may I have a copy of that?
No.
I'll care with the board.
Well, then, I'm party to this. I'd like to see, no, I'd like to see what you're showing the board.
Put it on the projector, is our projector working?
It won't zoom in that far.
Oh, no, it says ten acres. The whole track. Yes.
No.
You can switch to it, but you can't zoom.
This is your, the second paper that I've handed out.
I could scan.
It'll provide you with some of the basics. Understood. Okay. What you see in front of you are four flexes. Excuse me.
Here, I'll, Mr. Kaplan, you can have my copy.
Thanks.
What you see is four units to a building, which gives us some very unique opportunities. The building envelope conforms to your zoning, the frontage is one hundred and twenty feet. The units are as wide as thirty-two foot, it could even be made actually wider and still conform. The gross coverage, we meet the minimum requirements. The net coverage allows us thirty-eight units. The impervious, total impervious for the job is ninety-one thousand five hundred and twenty square feet, which is twenty-two percent, and we're allowed thirty-five. Open space, I've calculated the roads, the lots, and we have a total of one hundred and fifty thousand square feet, which equals thirty-five point four, and allowed is fifty percent, so we fill there. Maximum building length in, in, in road is one hundred and fifty feet, we're at one hundred and twenty feet. Minimum lot is three thousand two hundred square feet, we are at three thousand two hundred square feet. Parking, two blacktop, two garage, okay? The setbacks on the property are what's required, and they're fifty feet, as indicated on the plan. So it meets all the basic requirements of your zoning, so it's a by-right plan. So the damages are reflected from this. Okay, we do have other plans that were enhanced higher, and some that were rendered, going way back to two thousand four, five, or when we originally had the property under agreement of sale. And I just wanted to talk to you about a few of the benefits, because with four units to an acre, or, or, I, I have like quarter-acre lots, which makes it a very impressive townhouse community that doesn't actually exist, so it gives me something that's very competitive. The lower density offers me additional room for first-floor bedrooms, okay? A real plus when dealing with older people. Also, I'm able to interject something that most don't have, I can orient the place so that the two end units face out to kind of like an open space between buildings, and you have a lot more open space visually because of the less massing of buildings. But, that's getting back here, it's, the lower density offers flexibility in land planning stage mover around site constraints. These are townhouses now that would be in-town with basic shopping and walking districts. Enough units to cost justify plans and sample. Public and sewer and water are, are there, they're real. Presently, the ground area for the sewer extension beds is available onsite with the fifty-foot setback. No present direct competition for these types of units. Our units depicted are two thousand seven hundred and eighty square feet. And the one really lovely thing about the plan is, instead of having seven units to a building, I have four units to a building, I have fifty-three percent in end units which are desirable. End units are the most desirable and, and the most pricey of all. Shorter building lengths will disperse more green area in between. Wider unit frontages remove the all, driveway and sea of blacktop in front of townhouses, as I've seen. Also, wider fronts translates into additional natural light into the homes. Quarter-acre lots allow rear, rear yards with privacy and space. Real privacy becoming real. Front lot lists of thirty-two or wider, vary in different orientations, allow you, when driving down the road, to see as you approach a mass of buildings, and then one unit, and that would be an end unit facing you, as you get in front of the building, you only see two units, and upon leaving, you see none. And it gives you quite a bit, a different visual. So what you're looking at, okay, is the damages are going to be very real, and the township by right needs to protect itself. Today, presently, from what I've heard and seen, you have a limited liability corporation that has provided you with a letter of credit for one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and has posted some eighty, seventy, ninety thousand dollars for the damages to date. This will not fly. Your fiduciary responsibility is there to make sure that the township's protected, and you're not protected, your damages will be there, okay? And I want to make sure you have the money to pay me for those damages. You can say whatever you like, but it's a real fact, okay? What's going to happen when it comes out of court? Are they going to totally say that I'm not entitled to what the base zoning is? I am entitled to what the base zoning is, I am entitled to those lots. So, I mean, that's, that's your decision, and it's going to be one that you cross-later, and you don't have the provisions written in there, we all have problems. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, again. Thanks for the opportunity to speak, I'm Dave Bromman, on behalf of Eleanor Partnership and Randy Wine Village Associates. I'll keep my comments brief, but would like to respond to a couple of things that were said this morning. First, let me thank you for incorporating that language. I think it was prudent, not just for my client's property interest, but for the township. While I haven't read it, I trust that the solicitor's office protected the township and us, and that's what we requested, and again. Sure, I'll try. Is that better?
Yeah, that's great, thank you.
Okay, great. So again, thank you for that. I've heard this morning, you know, that, that there's a legal requirement effectively to not ask for more escrow, I think that's what I heard. And I've heard through the last couple of meetings, and in listening to some of your tapes, that a memorandum of understanding is a legally binding agreement. Certainly, there's nothing my client is, is doing or wants to do, and certainly nothing our office wants to do to make you breach a legally binding agreement, let me get that straight. It's a little troubling that's a legal binding agreement, because the quid pro quo for paying for the road seems to be you locked yourself in to a development agreement you hadn't even seen. I've never seen that before, where township contracts for a development, so there's a quid pro quo, you get a road, they get a development. That's troubling, to say the least. I will reiterate that the taking itself, the document, contemplated an easement and a license agreement in paragraphs three and twelve respectively. The purpose of that, of course, were to protect my client's interests if the project went forward and there was construction. I understand the solicitor's office believes the highway occupancy permit application includes a traffic control plan, we've not seen that. But at a minimum, it would have been nice to have been consulted in regard to how the construction's going to proceed, so that our development, I mean, our shopping center is not going to be economically impacted in any respect. And we still ask for that, frankly. Before anything were to begin, we'd be consulted to make sure that our traffic is not, and our customers and our tenants are not going to be impacted at all by the construction. Lastly, I, I would just like to respond, and it gets back again to the MOU a bit, to what was said earlier this morning, I think, by the solicitor, and that is, you cannot ask for more security, you're legally prevented from doing so. For what it's worth, I don't agree with that statement. And the reason I don't agree with that statement is Ms. Bailey's planning code gives you authority, and in fact, it's in these agreements, the financial security agreement and development agreement respectively, to make sure that the improvements that are being constructed for the benefit of the public are adequately secured. And in fact, there's a detailed engineering estimate as to what the cost of the road is going to be, and that is in the financial security. I would think that the, what it's going to take to purchase the road ought to also be in that security. So it comes down to a matter of whether you believe your appraisals, or whether you believe what's been said, or is there something in between? I think it is something in between, you'll see at the Board of View. But in either event, I do think you have the authority to ask for more security in the development agreement by virtue of the MPC, because it is a public improvement. And the cost includes not just the brick and mortar, but also the cost to acquire the land. And there's a big dispute about that. Thank you, and have a nice holiday.
Anybody else?
Tony Spleas, one hundred Hopewell Road, Downingtown. This entire process is no different than the entire process that the same board has put every person through in this town. However, in light of the situation that's going on in Kennett, in light of the past history of some of the employees here, in light of Peter's bullying in Concord Township and Marple Township, it makes no sense to me how a board can make an agreement with a developer to take someone else's land, give it to him, then in turn, tell them instead of paying your traffic impact fee, you can build the road for us, and then they're going to get a, part, part of your RACP grant is going to be for some of the road, which Mr. Kaplan just said was part of the deal. So I don't know how much it is, is it two hundred and fifty thousand, or is it a million dollars of the RACP grant that goes towards offsetting of the road? So we're going to double-dip into our traffic impact fee and not pay it, which you guys put me through the coals over, and then we're going to get some money back from the state, which all of a sudden now is for the whole project. This whole thing stinks, it stinks that you're here today discussing something when you have a supervisor-elect that's going to be sworn in in four weeks. The fact that you rush this today so that the bullies over here can get what they want, you guys should be embarrassed, especially you, Jay, because you were here in the beginning, you're part of that memorandum of understanding, you should be ashamed of yourselves.
Thank you. Anybody want to respond, or anybody else have a comment?
Thank you, Dennis Whitley, eleven ninety-nine Horseshoe Pike. As a local businessman, I've been boisterous over the past many years. And as you can see, your town is starving for business improvement. The district has, is stalled, and it's actually going backwards. It's, there's been no help from the township to increase any way, shape, or form some kind of forward progress in. of forward progress in bringing new business and cleaning your town up to make it look appropriate. Now, with that being said, you know, if you look at your past history on your businesses, you've lost more businesses in the last year than you've gained, okay? So that should be a red flag. Not to make the fact that one of the oldest businesses in this town is now ready to be destroyed for the betterment of the township's needs, okay? Not for the people's needs, but for the township's needs, okay? Because there's a road that's going just west of it, only five hundred feet or whatever feet it is down the road. That light's going to improve the traffic issue that is supposed to be a problem here at the end of North Guthriesville Road. So for what reason we need another road put in seems kind of foolish in one way, but also seems to be, um, raising a lot of brows as to why actually we need it. Now, if the township's in, in need of money because of poor, you know, decisions that have been made over the years, maybe it's time to take a step back and look at your poor decisions and say, yeah, maybe we're going in the wrong direction. Because I can tell you, I sit here and watch court hearings after court hearings after lawsuits after lawsuits, and nobody wins in lawsuits, whether it's marriage, or business, or anything, okay? In the end, everybody loses. So taken into consideration, the real need for this road, is it just to have Giant come in and help bail you out for your mistakes that you've made in the past years financially? Or is it for the need of a road? Because if it's just for a road, maybe Mr. Cropper and, and, and his partnership would be interested in putting the road in if the township needs a road. But no, it was never, it was never approached that way. It was approached as, we need to get Giant in here, and then we're going to shoot these guys in the stomach and take their land, because that's going to bail us out of our mistakes. That's the way I see it.
It's actually an inaccurate statement, to be honest with you.
All right, well then, correct me. Correct me how, Mark?
The road was planned well before, uh, the Giant Shopping Center. It was, it was planned when a, when a development was going to go there. So, so that's how it's wrong.
And so why didn't the township take the motive to move forward and use the same money that they were able to receive from the highway, from the, from the state, to put the road in, without using John Cropper's land to give to somebody else so that they could put a business in? Why didn't you guys use it? Because you have millions of dollars in the bank. And not that, but I've been saying, three twenty-two's collapsing where the sewer goes across, and obviously, that sewer line is broke. And I know that Scott has said that that's because of underground springs. Well, those underground springs didn't have the same aspect, or same problem before the sewer line got put underneath the road there, so...
Three twenty-two's the state road.
Beg your pardon?
Three twenty-two's the state road.
That's correct, but it goes through your township. And your township writes tickets on that road to people that drive through. So you're utilizing it as a money pump for the township's use, okay? But if you're going to use it for that, then maybe why don't you try to help clean it up? This is what I said. There's no signage up in your town to show that there's veterans, or firemen, or ex-police officers, or something that were, that were good for the community. There's nothing in this town that shows anything like that. It's just you drive through it, it's like, uh, let's bail out on the next guy that comes in and see what we can get out of him. This is the same, this is the same process that's happened. That's why you've had four, four hardware stores that haven't been able to make it in your township. Your Burger King's out of business. Your butcher shop's out of business. Your, your barber's out of business, okay? Now you have a building sitting down there, it's empty, and I'm half in, I have a half in mind to get in there and buy it, and chain it off, and just let the roof collapse, like the last building I had in this town, and make it look like the town wants to be, because some of your buildings are that way now. The roof's already collapsing, they're, they're, it's horrific. So now you're going to take the last businessman that has been productive to the community with over a hundred employees. Am I correct by saying that, John? You have a hundred employees or more?
Hundred and forty.
Hundred and forty employees, okay? If I was these guys that owned this development, and you guys committed to take me out at the knees because of your needs, okay? I would close that shopping center, I'd give them people ninety days, and I would close that shopping center, chain it off, and close the whole town down. And then alls you have is a gas station, a beer distributor, a couple pharmacies, and insurance agency, okay? You've taken and you've ruined everything to the nth degree. And this is what's been happening in this town. If you don't believe it, just drive through it, open your eyes. Because any other town, whether it's Lineville, or Phoenixville, or, you know, it doesn't matter, you know? They've increased, you guys have increased your town, community with, with housing by like eighty percent. And it's a negative on the business district. And the business district, if you look at good towns, the business district is what helps the town grow. And when we came, you weren't here at the last businessmen's meeting that we had, last month or month and two ago. And afterwards, I stayed and I talked to Scott and Luke. And I said, guys, at some point, this town has to grow up. Somebody has to have the balls to be something and make something of this town. You can't just sit back and think it's going to be, you know, high school dances at the firehouse, and manure spreaders running up and down the road, okay? Those days are gone. And if we don't have those people in position to make those decisions, and have the process and the ability to see to the future, it's not going to do anything good for this town. Now, obviously, Giant is a step forward, okay? But at the same time, it's a step forward that's, that's way beyond what the township needs at this point. We already have a grocery store here. We need bars, we need restaurants, we need little stores, Dollar General. We don't have anything in this town, okay? And with that being said, at some point, we either got to get rid of some people and get some real people in here that can make the decisions. We hired six, or three or four more police officers at the tune of fifty or seventy thousand dollars a year. Instead of having those guys, why don't we hire some people that can help make the town something? Because as you guys have said, you're overwhelmed. So just like with my business, when I have too much business, I hire more people to make it run smoother. And you have to hire people not like my aunt and uncle, you got to hire people that have the ability to do better for the township. So with that being said, I mentioned earlier about the lights and Christmas and things like that, we have to look at this thing down the road. What is going to be better for the township down the road? All right? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Bonnie Nye, and I'm the Vice President of the Apple Cross Country Club HOA. Trying to speak for our homeowners, and one of the things we're steadily hearing from them is they are looking for a more vibrant community close to home. Uh, and, uh, I regularly get questions from our homeowners about when they can expect more options here closer to home. And I think when we talk about fiduciary responsibility, I think one of the things that's true, true, and true is the vast majority of our homeowners who are living very close to the, our town center, find themselves frequently shopping and needing to travel five, ten miles to get to larger grocery store options. And, um, you know, they're looking for this to relieve their time, to relieve the costs of travel, and to have, um, more competitive options. So, you know, what we're hearing in our development is, we have a very, I think, large consensus of folks who would like to see this project move forward.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Seeing none, I'll turn it back over to Supervisor Winters for his remaining question.
May I just make two comments?
Sure.
I'd just like to respond to David Broman. With regard to the detour plans that we submitted to PennDOT, Mr. Prince and Mr. Orlando have intervened in the PennDOT proceeding, and they have all of those documents. So that, that business about, we don't know what's going on, is just not accurate. The second thing I'd like to say is, I've gone back, you all, I hope you all got my letter earlier this week, and... I, I'll send it to you, David. Yeah, I'll send it to you. I'll send it to you, David. This is eight or nine years that they've owned this ground. They testified, the same gentleman who was just up here testified in the condemnation hearing, that they've had plans to build townhouses here. They've never submitted those plans. Mr. Broman's letter talks about an appraisal of a loss of between two and four million dollars. I thought I was going to come in here today and see some appraisal. So we haven't seen an appraisal. Now, attached to my letter, and maybe Scott, can you, can we put this on?
It won't. We can, we can put it on the screen, but we can't zoom in. So at that resolution, we're not going to be able to see it, unfortunately.
I think we, if that's your...
Yeah.
Probably have that in our, in our email from, that's his, his rendering from...
So let me just explain this very quickly, so you've got a full picture. Years ago, when we were talking about the condemnation, we had, um, our engineer draw a plan for the L&amp;R property with the road in that we would pay for, with the stormwater management facilities in that we would pay for, and would service the remainder of the nine point eight acres. And we had a plan drawn, plan shows, I believe it's thirty, I believe it's thirty-five townhouses. So Mr. Blair is saying that with the entire property, without any stormwater management facilities, and without any real engineering, that he would get thirty-eight townhouses. So let's say that he's right, that he's lost three. It's a matter of public record, um, what Maplewood paid per townhouse lot. It's like twenty, twenty-two thousand dollars. So if the loss here is the other method that Mr. Blair would like to talk about, what he lost from the severance value, he gains a road that costs hundreds of thousands of dollars. He gains stormwater management facilities that cost a lot of money, and maybe he has three less lots. I don't think that he could get the full amount. But if he did, so if you said that it was twenty-five thousand dollars a lot, because you're going to have Ryan over here, or NVR, on the other property, the market has said it's in the twenty, twenty-five percent ra, a thousand-dollar range, there's seventy-five thousand dollars. We've already paid over a hundred thousand dollars. It's almost, well, I, it, it, I, I want to pick my right words, but I think it's insulting what Mr. Blair just came up here and told you after all these years to do, to tell you all the loss he's going to have on, on a sheet of paper that he probably did last night. That's not the way you calculate damages. So I would just ask you to move on with this, so that, um, we can get these documents signed, and we can comply with our requirements or our obligations under your order. Thank you.
I'll give you a rebuttal.
I would like the opportunity to look over what he's talking about, since it's pertinent to the situation and to what I had to say, and maybe Tom can give me a copy of it, and we could have a five-minute recess. Please, I'm up talking.
I don't care. You've had it.
All right, gentlemen, this was something that was presented to you back a couple years ago, because I know I had it.
Can I just see it, and I can tell you?
Do you mind Mark just showing him the copy?
This, uh, this is not the original that was presented to me, okay? The original was done with less units on it, and smaller units on it. It's also not desirable. There's seven units in a building, okay? It's a typical townhouse development, but, but, it doesn't conform with your zoning. I see a note right here. It says, "The plan will require relief from East Brandywine Township zoning, salvo, and stormwater ordinance managements." It doesn't comply. And he's trying to tell you that you could give me this. You can't give me this. This is too late for this, okay? You have to give me what I lost at the time of taking, okay? So this is an insult to the board to bring up something like this. And let's see the date on this. Two seventeen. My original ones go back much, much earlier than this, and I have a lot of information compiled on the last one, but this is an absolute joke, okay? An insult to the board's intelligence, and trying to slide something fastly in front of them. Enjoy it.
Okay. Supervisor Winters?
So for section, section, uh, for the RAC P grant that I'm talking about, um, number thirteen for special clauses, Article thirty, says, "Grante shall submit an executed cooperation agreement with Carlino East Brandywine Inc., Carlino East Brandywine LP, Carlino Development Group Inc., Carlino Commercial Development LLC, Peter Carlino, and Marcia Carlino," which obligates Carlino East Brandywine, Carlino East Brandywine LP, Carlino Development Group, Carlino Commercial Development Group, Peter Carlino, and Marcia Carlino to comply with the terms and conditions of the grant agreement. So if the state is requiring them to, um, sign their names personally, be responsible for the grant, and then also says... "Grante shall submit an executed cooperation agreement with East Brandywine Township that authorizes the project, obligates Chester County or East Brandywine Township to reimburse the Commonwealth for any reimbursements that may later be determined to be, have been ineligible." Have we received this agreement from, from the applicant? Mr. Kaplan, have you, or Mr. Miller, since I don't know what I'm talking about, have we received this agreement from you?
We're not up to that with the RAC P grant. That's not, excuse me, that's not going to happen until we go to draw on the RAC P grant, and that's not until we start construction.
Says prior to.
Yeah, prior to.
Prior to receiving reimbursements.
Yeah, prior to...
So you can, so you, so you're here today to do, to have the board sign all of these agreements prior to the recording of the final plan. You can still be executing this agreement with the state prior to you requesting a draw? So here we are, you know, applying a one-point-seven-million-dollar credit.
I'm sorry, I must interrupt again. Anybody at home is not going to hear the conversation.
I've been, I've been involved in these types of grants. Those, those types of grants and those documents are signed when you're ready to go to construction. When we're ready to go to construction, then we will, we will do whatever we need to do. Just like when we're ready to go to construction and we own the property, we'll record the plan, and we'll put up our financial security.
So you have no, you have not executed this agreement with East Brandywine Township? Um, this is, I'm, I wasn't here at the time, so I don't know. This is done back in two thousand and fourteen or fifteen.
What, what was?
The, when you received, when you filled out the application for the RAC P grant, was two thousand and fourteen?
I don't know, Mr. Winters.
It was prior to the last two years, should I say? So, um, we're basing our, we're basing our traffic impact fee credit on grants that aren't even, you know, we're supposed to be a part of, and we don't have any agreements with them. I think that's something that we should, we need to look into. But it clearly shows that the applicant has to sign their names personally. So, again, you had said that it was unlawful. I'm saying, if the state can do it, why, why can't we? Why shouldn't we?
I think, I think...
There is no reason why. No one, you've never really answered my questions in the emails, why not protect the township?
I did, well, that, I'm all for protecting the township. We, that's why I'm here. What, what the requirements of the RAC P grant are, are different than what, I, I understand what you're saying, but it has nothing to do with these development agreements.
These development agreements are based on the credit, of one-point-seven-million dollars for a road that's not on our...
No, they're not. The development agreement includes a provision, as you indicated earlier, that the applicant will get some credit for the cost of constructing the road. That calculation is in control of the township. Once the road is finished, and the township receives all appropriate documentation, the township and the board of supervisors will determine what credit, if any technically, that the developer will get for building the road.
Well, that's also leads me to my, to my next point. Part of your condition of approval was, you shall pay the traffic impact fee, build the road, show us your actual costs, and we'll determine, the board will determine what credit, if any, is going to be issued. We haven't received a check for one-point-seven million or one-point-five million.
That's, that's not what the agreement says.
That was what your, a condition of approval was.
I don't agree with you. Again, we, we went over this last time, and I think also responded in writing, uh, my interpretation of that provision... My interpretation of that provision is not that the applicant has to pay the traffic impact fee in advance. Otherwise, the term credit would be meaningless.
I don't, I had to disagree.
And I, I respect your opinion.
I would have to disagree, I mean, it says.
I understand.
It says, right here, "Conditions of approval," right above it. "The approvals and waivers granted above are subject to applicants' strict compliance with the following conditions of approval."
As I said.
And it says, and it says, number seventeen and fifteen. So we'll go to fifteen, says, "Applicant shall obtain the necessary highway occupancy permit in order to construct the connector road." That's a condition of approval. They haven't received that. I don't care for what reason. I'm just saying they haven't received it. So how can we be signing any agreement if they haven't even, um, adhered to a condition of approval? And Mark, earlier, you had said the MPC doesn't allow that. Then be, then you, why didn't you advise your client to not, to not agree to these conditions? We, you didn't have to agree to them, you, you did.
Yes, I did, and, and, and the condition.
You can't do that now, we're gonna change that.
Now, that's, that's not, that's not true. The condition of approval, you gave the approval. The condition of approval is after the approval, before we, before we record the plans.
It doesn't say that in here. Because some, some things say prior to release of recording. Some say simultaneously with the recording of the plan.
But we already have the approval. We, you gave us the approval.
On you obtaining the highway occupancy permit, not obtaining that.
When, when, when?
It doesn't say prior to anything.
So, but.
It's a very.
I'm sorry, I wasn't spoken to.
Says right, to give you an example, Mr. Kaplan, number thirteen says, and this is a condition of approval, "Prior to the release of the plans for recording, applicant shall reimburse the township for all outstanding reasonable engineering, administrative legal." Another one, another condition.
Mr. S, do you wanna make a comment?
Well, it's fine.
Number eleven, "Applicant shall prepare, execute, and record simultaneously with the plans." It's, it's spelled out in the conditions of approval. Number fifteen doesn't say prior to the recording of the plans. Doesn't say prior to a building permit. It doesn't say.
When does it say, when does it say we have to get the permit? When does it say?
It says applicant shall obtain the necessary highway occupancy permit.
When, when?
Doesn't say prior to release of plans.
What does it say? When?
That you shall obtain it.
When?
I don't care when, Mr. Kaplan. You haven't received it and it's a condition of approval. Why should we be signing in a development agreement that says that you have obtained it?
No, it doesn't say we have obtained it.
I'll show you that next. You haven't, you have not, you haven't received all of your approvals. Why are we even talking about developer agreement right now? This is, that mentions everything. What happens if you don't receive the highway occupancy permit?
Then we don't go ahead because the agreement's very clear. You can't record the plans and we don't start construction until we fit, until we satisfy all of the conditions of approval.
Where does that leave the township? We condemned half a road. We didn't condemn the, the full road needed. Where does that leave us? We have to go have a road then, but we condemned something.
That's a whole other issue. That's a whole other issue. You, you keep going from one, you, you, you keep just jumping from one issue to the other, just to try and delay this.
No, I don't understand. It's a road we're talking about. I'm, I'm asking what happens?
What happens if what?
If you can't obtain the highway occupancy permit for whatever.
Then the road doesn't get built.
And then, Tom, where does that leave us?
You own the ground. You own two pieces of ground.
For what? For what?
We could build, I suppose, I mean, I don't like to speculate, but the township could decide to construct the road on its own.
How? We don't own the land. We don't own all the land necessary.
You could condemn that land. That land. Or, 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 wait a minute, we, we have a, I think we heard earlier that maybe, uh, L and R Partnership and VVA would be willing to build the road. They said that earlier. I don't know.
Okay, but that doesn't, that's just a hearsay. As, as far as.
Well, somebody stated it, I heard it. It's not hearsay. Somebody stated it.
I believe that was a, um, I think that's a while back. I believe it was an email saying, if, if a township's so, it's so concerned about a road, we'll build the road. Just don't take more than what you need to take for the road. Don't take six hundred eighty-seven feet wide when the eminent domain code says you can only take a hundred twenty feet wide. That's, I think was, that was about, it was a different subject. But as far as looking at number seventeen, "Applicant shall pay a traffic impact fee equal to one point four million, as required by the township's traffic impact fee ordinance." Where is this check at? Where is the security for this traffic?
Read the rest of it. Read the rest of it.
"Applicant shall be entitled to a credit in the amount of actual construction costs."
That's right. The, 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 the traffic impact fee under the law is paid when you have a building permit, when you have an occupancy permit. We don't pay the fee now.
Doesn't say that in here.
But the law says it. The municipality's planning code says when the traffic impact fee is to be paid.
I don't understand. Why, why would we approve something and then ask for money? Why not get the, the check upfront?
Because that's what the law is, Mr. Winters. Traffic impact fee is paid as dictated by the municipality's planning code.
And ours says we can charge you X amount per trip. We came up with one point, well, it was higher, one, but now it's one point four million when the bank pad was removed. What, what does that have to do with anything? Where, it says you shall pay a traffic impact fee. When are you gonna pay that?
We're gonna pay it when we calculate the credit and when we get to the point where we're in, have to pay the fee, which is either at the building permit or at occupancy permit.
So you are gonna be paying the full one point four million dollars upfront?
It's less the credit.
Less the credit for what? You haven't done anything yet. So we should still be receiving that money as security?
You know what?
I mean, why not?
I, I, this is, this is just gobbledygook.
We do it to everyone else.
This is actually, that's an incorrect statement.
How is it not? We, for, we actually, there's people in this room that we've, we've dealt with on the traffic impact to not have to pay it?
I'm, I'm not gonna name names, but not, no, not, not to pay it.
Okay, I'm, I'm a little confused.
I, I know, I, I see that, but.
But why is this, but why would that be a condition of approval? Why would you approve this condition if you didn't agree with it?
I'm not gonna answer anymore of your questions. They're not, they're not sincere.
They're not sincere, I'm asking you a question.
I'm not answering anymore of the, the silly questions.
I'm sorry, but how can you not answer a question? It says right here, you, applicant shall pay a traffic impact fee. You agreed to these terms. Now you're saying you're not gonna talk about it anymore?
And then it outlines exactly how it's supposed to be paid. So you can't read, you can't pull out that one thing and ignore the other. But that's what you're choosing to do, so.
And again, if you look at the cost, no, number one, that's, that's.
Well, you don't have an answer for that, do you?
Excuse me?
You don't have an answer for the fact that you're taking, it's a paragraph. There are two different provisions in the paragraph. They have to be read together.
Well, then I think we should have to make an amendment to this development agreement before we sign it, to make it clear then. So that way, we don't have the same issue when Mark comes here a year from now and says, you know what? I don't wanna talk to you anymore about it. I'm not gonna pay it, I'm not gonna talk to you about it.
I think the plan to approval provisions are very clear about how that's gonna be handled.
And it says right here, that's part of the condition, this applicant shall pay a traffic impact fee. I mean, this road, this road.
We are charging a traffic impact fee. All that's doing is confirming that the traffic impact fee and how it's gonna be calculated, well, that it, how it's gonna be calculated and that they are obligated for that. Then it, it goes on to say that we're accepting the road construction and giving them a credit toward the traffic impact fee.
Okay, but then why would we word it applicant shall pay? Why, why not say, "The impact fee calculated totals one point four million dollars. When you, when you're done the construction, we'll look at the hard cost and we'll have a meeting to determine what credit will be available."
That's exactly what it does say.
No, it says applicant shall pay a traffic impact fee of one point four million dollars.
That's right.
Haven't paid it. So what are we doing here then?
No, they don't, no applicant pays it upfront.
Why would we not require that upfront?
Well, we don't.
It says it right here that we.
Because the law does not authorize us to do that. And, and I, I don't recall off the top of my head, as Mark Kaplan doesn't recall, but the MPC either says it has to be paid at building permit or, or certificate of occupancy. I think it's building permit, but I'm not certain.
Well, can we look at that then before we sign this? Because I'd like to be clear.
You don't, we don't need to look at it now.
Well, I think we need to look at it prior to agreeing to agreement.
Well, that's, I, I, again, I respect your opinion.
So you don't really have a clear answer. Mark doesn't have a clear answer. The board doesn't have a clear answer, but you want us to sign something.
I have a clear answer.
What's your, what is it then? You don't know? You said, "I don't know" off the top of my head.
I'm not sure if I can respond. You want me to respond?
I'd like, yes.
Okay. The order, you just read parts of it, requires the payment of a traffic impact fee and the developer is entitled to a credit based on the cost of construction of the connector road. Those, that condition has been included in the development agreement in somewhat more detail. It says the applicant has to pay the traffic impact fee and they deserve a credit for the, or they're entitled to a credit, I'm sorry, I misspoke, for the cost, the construction cost of the road. It authorizes the township to request any and all documentation from the developer to confirm the construction cost. It also authorizes the township to make the determination of what the credit is when the information is available. The township is in, I would say, well, the township is in control of the amount of credit that the developer gets for constructing the road. It's very clear in the agreement. You can't, as Mr. Fisher indicated earlier, you can't read one sentence in any order or any document and say, and then make a conclusion based on reading one sentence. That's my opinion. Gentlemen, I, I apologize, I have to leave. I have to be in court. Mr. Miller will stay here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
As far as the, I am reading, this is attached to the developer agreement. I am, I'm reading the developer agreement. It doesn't say, you, we have the probable estimated costs. So we can base it on that.
Well, we do have, we have, we have as part of the financial security, the cost of the connector road as estimated by the applicant's engineer and as confirmed by our township engineer. That full amount will be posted as financial security with the financial security agreement, which is the normal legally required process.
And as far as the credit for North Cuthbertville and three twenty-two, what do we, why are we issuing credit for an intersection that's not the road?
Nobody said we are.
It says right in their estimated cost.
It doesn't matter what's in their estimated cost. I, I, I think I just indicated that once the construction is completed and the township has documentation to determine what the cost of that construction is, the township will make a determination of what the amount of the credit will be.
And, so you're saying after everything's done, then we can negotiate it and if they don't accept it, then what?
Well, I didn't, I didn't, I, I didn't say we, we, I didn't say we will negotiate. We will be obligated to abide by the terms of the agreement.
And this agreement says they shall pay the fee and then receive a credit, which is, to me, is a reimbursement.
And they can't, they're required by law at the very latest to pay the traffic impact fee before they get a certificate of occupancy. And it may be building permit, I'm not certain. But in any event, um, we talked about this last time too, they won't get a certificate of occupancy until we resolve this issue.
But the problem with that, Tom, is it probably won't be them who's requesting the certificate of occupancy. It'll be the tenant, so we have no, there are no teeth.
It doesn't matter who it is.
Sure it does.
No, it doesn't. They won't get a certificate of occupancy.
You can't stop someone from getting a, a, a tenant from getting a U N O if they, if they have.
Well, I, you know, uh, earlier today, earlier today was suggested that we can demand things that aren't legally authorized, but now we can't with all certificate of occupancy because you say it's not legally authorized.
I'm saying that these agreements need to be cleaned up. There's nothing wrong, that, there's, this isn't, this isn't holding anything up. This isn't, um, have, have you applied for a building permit? So this isn't gonna hold you up. It's not holding you up then because you haven't even applied for a building permit. So why not try to, let's clean it up? Let's get some of this language that is unclear. Let's get it clear. So there's no question, and you don't have to hear me. I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying that you're not entitled to these agreements. I'm saying these agreements, they're not.
We've, we've, I'm sorry.
They're not ready, I don't think.
I'm sorry.
I mean, we have, you, you have a blanket easement. Part of the condition, number nine, is a blanket easement across the parking lot sidewalks. We don't have the blanket easement. It, that changed, now it's just sidewalks. That's a condition of approval that was not adhered to. Why are we, you can't change an approval, Tom, you're the solicitor, without coming to the board first to saying, guys, we want to do this, we recommend this, let's talk about it. You don't have the authority to just change a condition of approval that the board voted on and then incorporate that into a developer's agreement. I don't see, I don't see how that authority, uh, lies in you. It lies in the board and.
We.
We have, why are we not having that conversation?
Do you want me to respond?
I'm not done yet, but.
Okay, fine, I just wanted to make sure.
I mean, I'm still, I'm, I'm understanding when you receive the authorization to even start working on these. So.
We, when we hired them as our solicitor.
Correct.
But lawyers don't just do work as they please and bill you. They, they, they say, here's your work product. What do you mean, I didn't ask for that? I mean, this, this is.
This is part of the normal and customary process of a land development approval. The plan's approved, the, the board at times imposes conditions. It's our responsibility as a solicitor to make sure those conditions are adhered to.
You changed the conditions.
We didn't change anything.
It says, then why?
There, there's a document which is an easement, and I can't think of the name, for the pedestrian.
Pedestrian and bicycle.
And that, that agreement is part of what's been submitted to you today. If the board chooses not to approve that agreement, that's up to you. You are making the decision.
Well, but.
You, you are making that decision. To me, it seems not very prudent to have pedestrians and bicyclists wandering around the giant parking lot in any area. It seems more logical to designate an area, which is what has been done, where those pedestrians and bicyclists can cross the property in a, in a somewhat safer manner. And that's what the document provides. It provides a crosshatched area by an exhibit, which is for the purpose of the passage of bicyclists and pedestrians. And if you choose, if the majority of the board chooses not to approve that agreement, that is your prerogative.
But we're, we can only go on advice of our solicitor. You're saying that it's not prudent. Your office prepared the order and conditions of approval for this board. One of the conditions was a blanket easement.
I understand.
Now you're changing that.
No, we're not changing anything.
The easement doesn't include a blanket easement, it includes a sidewalk.
You're correct. It does, it's not a blanket, well, I, I will say this. It's not a blanket easement over the entirety of the Carlino East Brandywine Development Property. But it is a blanket easement in the sense that there's an area which is specifically cordoned off for pedestrians and bicyclists, which is in the most logical place it could be. We don't want it to go through the stormwater management basin. We don't want it to go through the middle of the parking lot.
Well, it says applicant shall grant a blanket easement to the township. And not, I'm not talking about basins. Talking about our order that you prepared. Applicant shall grant a blanket easement to the township for pedestrian and bicycle use by the general public of the parking lot, sidewalks and crosswalks leading to from the western property line, the Waters property, to the sidewalk on the catcher road. We don't have, our easement does not include the parking lot.
Well, if, if the majority of the board does not want to approve that, uh, agreement, that's fine. If you prefer to have a blanket easement, you can request. If you prefer to have an easement over the entirety of the property, you can request that.
We, we did. We made a condition of approval.
Right. So if the majority of the board does not want to approve that agreement, that's your prerogative.
And I believe after that conditional approval, the matter was sent to the Trails Committee. It was just, the Trails Committee is the one that recommended the specific area that's now the subject of that proposed tra, pedestrian and bicycle easement.
So again, I think that, why are we not getting the personal guarantees to, to help? That would ease my mind. A personal guarantee would ease my mind.
Well, I, I tried to point out to you, a personal guarantee can be worthless. We don't know that a personal guarantee is worth anything. What is worth something is financial security as required by the municipality's planning code, which is a bond or a letter of credit or cash. Personal guarantees can be worthless.
And what happens is a line of credit. Did that expire?
The, the financial security documents and the line of credit typically, it's not a line of credit.
A letter of credit.
A letter, typically a letter of credit has an expiration date. We require that those letters of credit be automatically renewed as, for as long as it takes for the project to be completed. If, if the bank or the financial institution holding the letter decides not to renew it, they have an obligation to notify the township. We then have the authority to draw the full amount of that letter of credit and deposit it into the township's general fund or some other fund in order to complete the improvements. That's what's done in every municipality that I represent.
For the construction, for the financial security agreement, I'm talking about...
We will have financial security for one, whatever the cost of the construction of the road is, one point six some million dollars. We will also have financial security in, I think it's close to five million dollars.
Four point four, five million.
For the other public and I would say common improvements, which are shown on the land development plan. Stormwater management basins, sidewalks, the parking lot, everything that you see practically on the land development plan. So if the developer decides not to proceed for some reason, because it goes bankrupt or for whatever reason, we have a letter of credit where we have the authority to draw the full amount of that letter of credit to complete the improvements in order to protect the township and the public.
So we, if we have the proper amount of security for the improvements, I think that we need to increase the, the amount of, of letter credit for the, uh, just compensation.
I understand that.
That's not final yet.
You've said that, I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
So can we?
No.
Why are we not?
Because the developer is not willing to do that.
So? Then we're not willing to sign a developer's agreement until they are willing to provide the necessary security at our comfort level? That's called good business.
Well, I understand, I understand your position. You've stayed it several times.
I, I, I've been in court. I have a small business. It's, it's, it takes time to chase down money that's owed. Why do that? Why have to do that? If it were to happen, if we can take care of this upfront, we don't have to worry about it. I think that'd be better for the applicant. I think it'd be better for the township. Everyone's happy. Now, you know, we're, we're contemplating these agreements that are based on whether or not the developer is going to agree to them. We're here to, to take care of the residents and the taxpayers, not to appease a developer and what they want and what they, what they don't want.
We're not, we, we, I'm sorry. May I respond?
Yes.
These agreements, most of them, are based on the township format of the agreement. Some of them are not because they're sort of specialty items that don't normally come up, like the bicycle and pedestrian easement. Our office, primarily Kristen Camp, has gone over these agreements extensively and it's our opinion that for the purposes that they're being executed, they protect the township. The purpose of the development agreement is to, is authorized by the municipality's planning code and the purpose of it is to provide assurance that the development is going to be completed as shown on the plan. And these documents do that.
Yeah, and they, and they also reference the MOU and they also supersede any previous agreement. So it's almost the, the MOU is being manipulated and recreated within the developer's agreement because this, this isn't a form, a township form agreement. This is the, uh, agreement that was worked on for months with, with the applicant's counsel and your firm. So if, if you have the clauses in there that this is going to supersede any other agreement and you, and you guys, your firm is advising this board that the MOU is valid, um...
Well, I'm, maybe I...
You know, we, I think that we need to have a little bit more security in, included as far as the, um,
Maybe I...
the land taken, so why, why not add a, a clause in there as a state did to protect the taxpayers, to protect the township residents? If it's, if your answer is just because the developer won't, then that's just not a good enough answer to me, in my opinion. That's just, I, I think that, uh, the board, I think we need to do our...
The board can choose not to approve the agreements if, if it likes. I think there's a motion on the floor. It's been made and seconded and there certainly has been a lot of discussion about it. It's, it's up to the board to decide whether they're going to approve these agreements or not.
All right, one final.
Since it's come up a couple of times this morning, I, I have never recalled seeing a condition precedent that the highway occupancy permit needed to be obtained before the plans were recorded and the project could move forward. It was represented, I believe, this morning that it's in there. I just relooked at the agreement. Conditions to be met prior to the release of the preliminary final plans for recording, pages ten through twelve, and there is no condition that the highway occupancy permit needs to be obtained before the plans can be recorded.
Anybody else? You're good?
Yeah, I think that, I think that we need to, um, work on these agreements.
All right. I, I would disagree only because we've had these for months now and we've had opportunities after opportunities over the last weeks to present our questions to, and I'll state it one more time, to vendors, uh, solicitors, parties, anybody that's involved with this. And to my satisfaction personally, every question that was asked, um, was, was answered appropriately, I, I felt. And we, you were, you were a big part of the, um, hiring of the solicitor. You, you gave a yay vote for that, uh, giving the solicitor the approval to make decisions on our, and, and, and help us with our decisions, um, in any case. And, um, today you have a problem, I get that, but, but just remember that, you know, we've had this weeks to answer and ask questions and I believe that every question that was asked today has been asked before and answered. And I was comfortable with it. I understand you, you maybe weren't comfortable with some of them, but, um, that's, that's what I'll say.
But my questions weren't answered though. My, they haven't answered my questions. They, they skirted past the actual question and just blurred it with stuff that I don't know, you know, I'm not interested in that. I want clear advice. To be clear though, Chairman, you don't agree with me that we should request a personal guarantee for additional letter of credit for security when the, when the condemnation has not been, it's not over. So you're saying on the record that you're comfortable with a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars and that's going to cover it all. That's all we have. And from Mark Kaplan's letter from last week that essentially said that he's not paying anymore. He did what he said he was going to do. That was the MOU. We did it. We said everything. So I want you on the record to say, yes, I'm, I'm okay with a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
I, I don't think his letter said that they would not pay any more than that.
It, it sinuated that saying, we've done what we said we were going to do and that's it.
But they're, they are obligated in the agreements to pay whatever the ultimate just compensation is determined to be. And he never said that they would not pay that. So that's, it's inaccurate to imply that there was a letter that indicated that they weren't going to do what they're obligated to do.
So that we're not putting words in your mouth? Would you like to?
I agree with Jay. You, you confuse security for an obligation and I just, I'm just letting this run, but I agree with Jay. We're on the hook for whatever the board of you, it is not this...
I'm sorry, Peter.
It is not this body. This is what I was trying to say to you earlier. You just simply don't understand so many things. It is not this, it is not this body. It is not this body. It is not this...
I've seen all of your LPs and your coverage and your layer of blanket, blanket, blanket. I'm not, I'm not, this is how business is done. Don't come up here and insult me.
Mr. Scalise, we're running a public meeting. It doesn't mean you can chirp out in the background.
Come up here and insult me and say that I'm confused. Then you know what? If you, are you telling me today that one hundred percent you're on the hook for anything that this is going to cost?
Yes.
Then why don't you just sign your name personally then? If you say there's not going to be any issue?
Because we have an, because we have an MOU.
You're telling me that, you're telling me that yes, absolutely? Then why do you have an issue? Why wouldn't you not say, here's my personal signature that I, Peter Miller, will, not an LP, not a piece of paper, I'm obligated for whatever the board of you decide. Why not say that? Will you do that?
That's, you finished?
Will you, will you, I'm asking you, will you sign?
No, I won't.
Why not?
Because we have, our entity already has obligated ourselves to do that.
But you, I want your signature. Why not? You're saying that you're okay with it?
That's not the arrangement. It's, it's...
See? That's not the range that you want. Why? You're telling the board...
Okay, I've, I've said enough.
You're telling the board that everything's fine and you should have no issue signing it. I mean, Tom's response to my question, for the weeks of my answers, of all my confusion, is we'll just have to sue him for it. And how long is that going to take and who's paying for it? When we could get ahead of it right now and, and avoid it altogether? That's, why not? And then I'm done.
No, I think it'd be appropriate to call the question. All those in favor, I guess. I, I think there's a motion and a second on the floor to approve these agreements, so it'd be appropriate to call for a vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay. Do you notice as to read?
Tonight, um, I'm sorry, um, we don't have any new business. Subdivision and zoning applications, we don't. Ordinances and resolutions for consideration?
No, we don't have any ordinances or resolutions.
Okay, um, do we have any public comment on agenda items? Seeing none, notices, the 2020 East Brandywine Township Board of Supervisors Annual Organization Meeting will be held on Monday, January sixth, 2020 at eight AM. There will be no work session on Thursday, January second, 2020. The East Brandywine Township Board of Supervisors will hold a special meeting for the purpose of considering and adopting the 2020 budget on Monday, December thirtieth, 2019 at eight AM. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.